We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Jeff Watson will bring the invocation.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this Valentine's Day that you've blessed us with. Thank you for the opportunity to share this day with our loved ones. We thank you for blessing us with the opportunity to come here tonight and serve the people of Springdale. And we ask that you be with us and lead us tonight and help us make appropriate decisions that better our city that we live in. Lord, we ask you to please be with all those people that are suffering tonight in Turkey and in Syria, those that have lost loved ones, those that have suffered injury, those that have been displaced. We ask that you please look over those people, give them comfort, give them healing, and take care of them in this time of trauma and time of shock. And please bless them and be with them. And, Lord, we just thank you for all of your grace that you bless us with. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. I will now call to order this regular meeting in the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. And I'll ask our city clerk to begin things by calling the roll.
Mayor Spross?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rex Bailey?
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Ernest Kay?
All right, thank you. And we are at the item four on your agenda. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, we ask that you go to the microphone, please state your name and address, and keep your comments brief because the council won't take action on anything tonight that you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move for A and B.
Did we get a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Carrie's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item seven, we... Jill Dabs, Executive Director of the Downtown Springdale Alliance, is here, and she's going to bring a report on the doings of the DSA. Jill?
Hello.
Do you have a presentation to show?
I do. It's up.
Okay, you're ready.
It's teed up already.
Good deal.
Do y'all have it down there as well? And is my microphone on?
You're good.
Okay, I can't tell. Okay, well, first, I just want to thank you. Thank you all, and I'm going to make this brief. It's Valentine's Day, and so we can move on to other things that are planned for the evening. I hope you all have great dates ahead of you tonight. Downtown Springdale, real quick, destination of choice. That's our vision. Our mission is still the same. It's to promote a vibrant downtown Springdale. We do that in three different ways. We activate spaces, we cultivate relationships, and we advocate for downtown. We are able to do this because of people like you, council, incredible leadership in our community, this business community. They all get behind us in a big way, and that's why we're able to do the things that we are doing. This is who's running DSA right now. Thank you all for your support. And 2023 Board of Directors, we have a new executive committee, Dina Wood, President. She's here with us tonight. Hannah Philpott, Vice President, Jacob McConnell, Treasurer, and Sandy Nickerson, Secretary. Incredible slate of board members. We brought on seven new board members just recently. And we have ex officio board members as well that represent different entities of downtown that are critical to the work we're doing. And we really appreciate the input that they give us on a... They attend our meetings, they participate, and they give great input and direction for myself and the staff. A little throwback here to 2014. Business Matters said, "Interest in downtown Springdale development proves Springdale's not that bad." And here we are today, breaking ground on places like Luther George Park. That was a really fun moment that we had back on October 7th. This is what Emma Avenue looks like on any given day in downtown Springdale throughout the year, and we have activities. Spring Street right now is getting a really major facelift, and there will be more improvements coming to it later this year as the city prepares to move back over here to these offices when the municipal campus is complete. This is just a cool picture I wanted to share with you. I was walking through one night and saw this. I don't know whose car this is, but I grabbed it and thought, "I'm going to put that in a presentation." It looks great. 2020, a little bit of throwback. City Council passed the outdoor dining district, and we've kept up with that. It's proved to be working well. Metrics on public safety, parks, litter control, all those measures continue to be going well. Fast forward, 2023. The outdoor dining district continues to help drive economic development to downtown Springdale. This year, these two guys opened another great restaurant in the Arts District, Bauhaus Beer Garden. And thanks to you, we've extended the outdoor dining district to include them. We have updated all the signage that you see when you're in the restaurants. There's different places around downtown that you see the signage that helps educate the public about the outdoor dining district, where the boundaries are, what the rules are. That's all been updated and will be installed soon. And these are the stickers that we will refresh downtown. Public Works is always super helpful to us in putting these down and remarking those areas. Those signs that we put down three years ago are quite faded. So we've already had these delivered, and they'll be going down soon. Our very own Jeff Row Brown and Rick Berry created the compostable cup receptacle. Since then, they have created a company called Cup Stackers that they are selling these to... Fabricating these and selling these to other cities and entities so that they can also have compostable projects. So we were a... I don't know if you call that an incubator business, but we took some of our downtowners' idea. We partnered with them. We created this program, the branding, and it's being used in other cities now. So role model to other cities and entities for that and educating on the compostable cup opportunities, which is, you know, a step better, even better than recycling. 2020, we installed seating in the outdoor dining district with support from a Tyson Family Foundation. We did this for a couple of reasons. We wanted to see if we could make the park more welcoming, if people would use it more and sit down in this beautiful space that was built for Springdale. And within 15 minutes of installing this furniture, people were sitting in it. It weathered a little bit, so we put it... With Flint Coast Support, we put some paint on it, and we got another year and a half out of it. It is time to start considering, what are we going to do with this furniture or with this space? This furniture has to go. But we want to continue to have the benefit of that in this park. So we're thinking about that right now. Cities expanded DSA's contract 50% in 2022. We are very grateful for that with the anticipation of... And so here's some highlights from 2022. The master plan update was adopted by the city council. Twelve and a half million dollar capital campaign was completed on behalf of the city of Springdale for the construction of Luther George Park. Like I mentioned, we broke ground October 7th. We had record-breaking sponsorship growth, so other businesses and community members getting involved in the work that we're doing in downtown Springdale. And then this is just kind of a recap on where we started with Luther George Park redesign. After the master plan was originally passed in 2015, that was one of the objectives of that master plan. The Design Excellence Grant was awarded in 2018. Between 2019 and '21, DSA led the redesign efforts, the community-led redesign efforts. And DSA led the capital campaign, and then the city broke ground. Some of this is repeated, I apologize. This is to be completed in summer of 2024. It is currently under construction. Here's a few renderings for anybody that hasn't seen these yet of what we have to look forward to. These are some of the new businesses that just recently opened that'll really be getting their feet on the ground in 2023. Zalipasta. Bella's Gifts is back. I know there's a whole lot of excitement about this. This is a business that almost came back to the exact same spot of dirt that they left a few years ago. Frida's is now open. Casa Lejo just recently opened. And we're super happy that ACOM and Strollia Toles has grown into the event it has. I have a picture of this event from the late 2010s and 2016, I think. And it was literally a six-foot table and some pamphlets, and it said Stroll. So this event has grown into a significant signature event for downtown Springdale. Opportunity Zone projects continue to make investments attractive in downtown Springdale. This is one that's going on now. The First Security Bank remodel is happening. We're really going to see a lot of changes to this property over the next few months. Via is under construction. This sits across the street from Luther George Park on Emma Avenue. There's a number of commercial lease spaces available in downtown Springdale. Greenway realignment is currently underway. This will be finished by late spring, just in time for street dinner. Huh?
You promise?
That's what I hear. I'm planning a big street dinner to celebrate it, so I hope so. These are... This is just a neat timeline of signature events that started... Some of these started when DSA was first being formulated. Amber Pariden was involved in some of these, and they've become signature events that really are reflective of our community and are defining to our downtown. We're just... I'm super proud to look back at these events that have been going for so many years and seeing that we've added some other events that are starting to really grow some roots as well that are sticking around. The Natural State Crit Series is coming back. Art Walk is coming back as a two-day expanded event this year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And the Halfway Halt is the largest rest stop and party for Square to Square. And the organizers of that event in Bentonville and Fayetteville had to extend how long that event is because people are hanging out in Springdale so long their event wasn't ending at the time that they planned on it. And that was... They were super excited about that. That's a really positive regional event that we're participating in. Just a quick list of our signature events. I will be sending this to you. These events, we estimate, bring at least 50,000 people into our downtown every single year. In your packet, in this presentation that you'll receive, there's dates that are already set on this that you can mark your calendars for when these events are going to be happening in downtown Springdale this year, in 2023. Those Octobers coming back. Art Walk, I mentioned that, and Christmas on the Creek, of course. I'm already searching. I'm already shopping for where we're going to find our new Christmas tree this year. And this is the end of it. I just want to say thank you all again. I'll be coming back with more information in the future. I couldn't cram it all into this one, but I got quite a bit in there, I think. So thank you all very much. Any questions? Oh, okay.
Any questions? All right. Dina, thanks for the DSA. Y'all are doing a great job, and we appreciate it. Thanks for the update. Okay. Okay, we're at item eight. Parks and Rec Committee and Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We met last week, and we had one item before us, and it was recommended for approval and moved forward. It's actually going to be a resolution to name a ball field at Cal Ripken after Justin Harp, which I knew personally, and very deserving. I can't think of the countless hours he probably put in with the youth sports in Springdale. But I'm going to read this in its entirety because it's very deserving for Justin. "A resolution authorizing the southeast Cal Ripken Ball Field at Tyson Park to be named for Justin Harp. Whereas Justin Harp, a longtime supporter of youth baseball in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and his contributions have had a lasting impact on youth sports in the city of Springdale. Whereas the city of Springdale, Arkansas, recognizes the positive impact that Justin Harp made to youth sports in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and whereas the city of Springdale, Arkansas, wishes to recognize Justin Harp by designating and naming the southeast Cal Ripken Ball Field at Tyson Park as Justin Harp Field. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council for the city of Springdale, Arkansas, that the southeast Cal Ripken Ball Field at Tyson Park will hereafter be known as Justin Harp Field."
Move, resolution pass. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
All right.
Carrie's eight zero.
Thank you. And we want to recognize Steve, your family, and friends. Casey's here, some friends are here. Thank you all for being here tonight. And this is the least we can do, and we're happy to be able to get it done. All right. Item nine, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
We have one item this evening. It is a replat of lots 5A and 5B of Elm Springs Heights subdivision. Planning Commission reviewed this replat and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance accepting the replat RP 2302 of lots 5A and 5B Elm Springs Heights subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments, council? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Move the Parks Clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, Parks and Rec Clause, Carrie eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 10, Finance Committee Report and Recommendations. Councilmember Amelia Williams. Amelia?
Finance Committee met last week. We have five items on the agenda. The first item is an ordinance. I'm going to go ahead and read it. "Calling a special election in the city of Springdale, Arkansas on the questions of issuing bonds under Amendment Number 62 to the Constitution of the State of Arkansas for the purpose of refinancing and financing the cost of capital improvements, levying a 1% sales and use tax for the purpose of retiring such bonds and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. And this will be presented by Shep Russell with Friday Farm."
Mayor, council members, this ordinance embodies the proposals that you have been discussing for a new bond referendum. The ordinance calls an election for May the 9th of this year. The four ballot questions for new improvements would be streets, parks, fire, and a new senior center. And the amounts are for streets, $135 million; parks, $16,250,000; senior center, $16,250,000; and fire, $7,750,000. For those of you who've not been through a bond election before, this is the maximum amount of bonds that may be issued. And you can't use proceeds for streets, for instance, for additional cost of parks. So everything is... What you see here is the limit. Not only does it call on the questions of capital improvements, the bonds, as you know from the title, are backed by a 1-cent citywide sales and use tax. This tax, it's a new tax, but it's really an extension of a tax levied in 2004 that's been extended and extended and extended with voter approval for bonds, most recently in 2018. These bonds need to be refunded to finance the new improvements simply because that sales tax is a limited sales tax to the bonds that were approved at the last election. The city levies an additional 1% sales and use tax, originally levied in 1992, and has since been, with voter approval, pledged to bonds for capital improvements. And that bond issue is proposed to be refunded along with the bonds issued in 2018. And so that all of the bonded indebtedness for capital improvements would be supported by the bond sales tax at that point. And that's where it would be left. Springdale's had very good success with the bond issues administratively and having the voters approve them. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Let me take a stab at just a couple of things I want to be sure and point out, Shep, and you correct me anywhere I'm wrong. But for the benefit of the press that's here, we've got some press here that we want to be sure understand this well. I think the main two points I want to point out is that Springdale residents will be taxed at the same rate they're currently taxed. There's no increase in the tax rate. And we're still going to have a 2-cent sales tax, in other words. And that by paying off and retiring the one bond, we are freeing up about four... Over $4 million a year in our general fund. And I think those things are important for our residents to know. So.
Very good.
Thank you. Any questions for Shep? And of course, Bob and Kevin are here also, if you have questions. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
I'd like to... For the police chief to recognize that the bond council's stretch limousine is over parked in the street. Yes.
You were just praying you'd go last. Denise wasn't thinking... Was he last, or was it...
Yes.
Okay, he was. We'll make sure Denise fixes that.
I also think it's important for the citizens to understand that the other cities do not have a current bond that they're working on right now. And so that frees up... Explain that a little bit. Frees up the construction and engineering process for the work that would be done in Springdale.
Right. Yeah, we think the timing is good. We do. All right. Thank you all. Item B.
Item B is a resolution. It was forwarded to council with a recommendation for approval. It is authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for testing services on Dixieland Road Extension forwarded from committee with recommendations for approval. And Ryan Carr can present, or Ben Peters?
Thanks, guys. Be careful.
Appreciate it.
All right.
We drew straws, and Ryan got to go home. So this is for construction phase services for Dixieland. This is the construction materials testing. It's a value of $30,000, but it'll be billed at an hourly basis, not to exceed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie's eight zero.
Item C, which is our third item under Finance, is a resolution to appropriate funds for the purchase of a vehicle for use on the trail system. It was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. And Mike Peters is the active transportation coordinator, and he will present this.
Good evening, thank you. I'm asking the council to appropriate funding to purchase a four-seat trail vehicle. It's basically a golf cart. It'll allow me quick, easy access to get out on the trails, to remote areas. Allow me to take up to three passengers with me, and also I can haul some, you know, trash bags, some equipment that we put out there. I've received three quotes, and I'm asking you to not go with the lowest quote, but to go with the one that's in town because of the convenience of being able to maintain it. Any recalls or any warranty work would be a lot more convenient.
Move resolution forward. Recognize for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Is that right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Kerry's eight zero.
Okay, item D is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to utilize federal funding for the following project, Dean's Trail Phase 3A. It was forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval, and again, Mike Peters.
We have an opportunity to apply for a $500,000 grant with a 20% match. We're in the process of building this trail. We don't know the cost of it because it hasn't went to bid, and this is an opportunity to use some grant money to offset some of the construction costs. I need the council's approval before I can apply for the grant.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Kerry's eight zero.
The last item is item E, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a software program for Public Works Engineering, Community Engagement, and Planning and Waive Competitive Bidding. This was forwarded from committee with a recommendation for approval, and this will be presented by Mark.
It's Gupta.
Gupta.
Mark Gupta.
Happy Valentine's Day, council. We're here, staff had vetted various software packages, and the bulk of this addition is for, to help planning and engineering streamline the development process, and in addition, it's replacement software for our street department, bulky waste, and code enforcement operations. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I got one, and I should have asked you this instead of putting you on the spot up here, but the, you know, we, we did discuss the, the cost of this annually moving forward. Is that not, part of that is offset, is it not, by, I mean, our current software, we're paying something, or are we? Is there an offset, is I guess my question?
Unfortunately, it's not. The, the software that we're replacing for code enforcement and Public Works, we would continue to use it, but they were acquired, and it's no longer going to meet their needs. Unfortunately, it was pretty inexpensive, so this will be in addition to our yearly budget.
All right, thank you.
But weren't they going to reduce, though, after the first year?
Correct. The first year, I believe there's $14,000 included for setup fees, and that won't be recurring.
So it won't be 56 every year?
No, sir.
Yeah, it'll be just over 40, 42.
42, 50.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right. Thanks, Mark.
And that closes finance.
All right, thank you. Item 11, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item we met with last Monday, and it was forwarded with recommendation for approval. I'll read the title. It's a resolution to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of vehicles and associated vehicle equipment for the Springdale Fire Department. Chief Holt is here to answer any questions.
Yep, these are staff vehicles, excuse me, that are replacing older models. We have some 2012 vehicles that we would like to rotate out of use, and we've added some administrative staff, and so they need vehicles. The specific request is for three Tahoe SSVs not available on a state bid and two half-ton double cab pickups that we sourced for a price that's below the state bid for a similar half-ton pickup.
Move the resolution bid up.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 12, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney. Actually, the next three items, Ernest will handle.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 12 and 13, I would request that this be tabled to the next Health and Sanitation Committee meeting, which I think you're going to determine on item number 15 at the request of the property owner. So I told him I would make that request.
Those need to be tabled separately?
We can take them together, 12 and 13 together, same property.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to table these until the next committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay, till the next committee meeting. Roll call, please. Oh, go, go ahead.
Well, you're going to decide that later on.
It should.
Oh, it's going to Health and Sanitation.
Yeah, it will.
Is that you?
It will.
Don't charge anyone.
Okay, roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
And item 14 is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to apply cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown rust and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency property located at 600 Huckleberry Lane.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there anyone here that needs to speak to this property? Okay. Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, Kerry eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item 15, we put on here as a reminder that we need to, council needs to make a decision about next committee meeting. It is scheduled for Monday, which is President's Day. We could, we can keep it there. Our city, city offices will be closed that day, but we can, we can still have it Monday, or we could move it to Tuesday because Planning Commission, you have a work session, correct?
I'm doing, I'm doing a training for the new planning commissioners.
Is that a, do we?
Whichever y'all want to do is fine with me. We can make our.
You know how I feel about committee meetings when you're not open? So I wish you'd do it Tuesday, make ours do two meetings. Can we do it early Tuesday? A little bit early?
Work session's at 5:00, so it may be better. Of course, we're at 5:30.
I need more than 30 minutes to do it right.
So is that cleanup or that sunset deal, is that your only thing that you would have?
I think, I think Public Works may have an item for the next committee agenda, I think, for finance.
That you would need to be?
That I would need, yes. I think so.
Need to be present for that?
Yes. Oh, yes.
For a committee, you'd need to be present at Public Works for?
No, no, I'd need to be for the one we tabled.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah, I was just asking, was there anything else that you felt like you needed to be present for?
Can we do it maybe Tuesday at 6:00? If you need more than 30 minutes, that would be an hour.
I, I did, honestly, I'd rather, if you're going to have committee on Tuesday, I think we could accommodate the planning commissioners and have the work session maybe be an overnight.
Well, it's just not fair, in my opinion, to require department heads or anybody, any other employees to come to our committee meetings on their day off.
I understand.
If we're going to give them the day off, we need to give them the day off.
We could do Wednesday.